Welcome to the February 14, 2022, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We have an invocation offered by Commissioner Murray, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Gentlemen, forgiving God, we ask for your guidance as we seek to move our city forward. We give thanks for the many men and women who have worked so hard every day, but especially during this last storm, and their work to clear the streets, keep us safe, care for the elderly, care for the infirm. We owe a great debt of gratitude to them. Please guide us as we turn to the post-COVID, we hope, world soon. We welcome the presence of each other and the social times and energy that comes from those interactions, and we thank you for leading us through COVID. May we look forward to your continued gentle hand on our backs. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Spars, do you have a call roll, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meizer?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Move to excuse Mr. Meizer.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, Mr. Meizer is excused. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of January 24, 2022. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm willing to accept the minutes of the January 24 meeting and dispense with the formal reading. Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Mr. Spars, do you have any email or written public comments regarding tonight's agenda?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. I have two. Oh, I'm sorry, only one for the beginning. This is from Sharon Johnson, Agenda Item Number 12, $60,000 ED grant to Tambo Entertainment. I would like to know what the business name Tambo Entertainment has selected for its business at the winery. Number two, will Tambo Entertainment be occupying 100% of the winery building? And number three, what other businesses are expected to occupy the building?
Thank you. We hopefully will address those questions as that legislation comes before us. Justice Center progress update by the Bowen Construction Group. We have with us tonight a representative of the Bowen Construction Group, Robin Wolf, going to provide us with a very brief update on the direction that that is taking. And I know I did get a chance to look at a couple of slides on that presentation, so I'm anxious to see that. Welcome, Ms. Wolf.
Welcome. Thank you. Appreciate your time tonight. I'm excited to be here. As Mr. Brady stated, my name is Robin Wolf. I'm an architect and the project manager for the renovation of the Sandusky Justice Center over at 222 Mig Street. We're excited to be at a point of schematic design development. We finished that about a month ago, and we've been working through some scope and budget reconciliations. But I'm here to present you tonight with a quick overview of the site layout and the building layouts that we have thus far. So we'll go over the schematic site layout, our schematic floor plans, an exterior design, and then a brief overview of the next steps for the project. So what you see in front of you is a site plan to help orient you. Mig Street is over towards the left of the drawing. One of the important things for us for this project is we are looking at reorienting the main entry of this building to what it was back in 1959 when it was built. So you'll see, as we move forward, once we get to the renderings, there will be a new face, a very clear public entry that faces Mig Street. Up to the top of the site plan, there is still a large amount of public parking, about 50-plus spots to allow people of the public to come to visit the court and the police station. You see over on the bottom and the right of the site plan, there's a big red dashed line. So that represents a secured fenced area of the site. Now, when I say fence, please don't get scared. It is a decorative fence. It's made to look nice and still be visible through it. But that is the secure parking area for the staff and the police fleet that will be housed at the site. So back there, you will have the police cruisers and all their vehicles, as well as parking spots for personnel and the court staff, judge, and clerk of courts. You will notice the parking lot to the north, to the top of the page, and over to the right are pretty similar to what you see there now. We will look at resurfacing with some minor improvements. Down on the bottom along Washington Street, we're going to reconfigure a bit to give better flow, again, for the site, make it easier to get through. So what we're looking at now is the first floor plan of the building. We're not changing the building footprint significantly. You notice there's a big red arrow that says the public entry. That's where the public will enter to access both the police and the court. If you follow the red arrows through that white space, that white space is all accessible to the public. So you'll come in, you'll come in a door immediately to the left, you'll have access to the police lobby, which will be open 24/7. If you go straight through, you'll go into the main court lobby, which will give you clear paths to go to the main courtroom, which will stay in place, as well as a new peering room up there towards the top. Those are both in red. The public will also have access to do business with the court through the windows. Everything in yellow there is the secure part of the clerks. So where the clerks will work, where they'll do their business, where they'll do paperwork. But the white part, there's windows right above where you see the word clerks. In the white part, there's about six windows total that allow you to do your business there. And then all of the blue you see in the back, that's all the police space for all of the staff. On this lower level, we will have patrol offices, as well as vehicle access down on the lower wing. And then in the upper wing, there'll be new locker rooms, roll call room, and other shared functions for the police. The gray spot you see is the mechanical space. You'll see those sprinkled throughout the plans. Mechanical space is janitor's closets. So up on the second floor, we're using similar coating. Again, you can see the white, so with the red arrows, that's all public access. The public will have access to the existing elevator to come up if they need to visit the prosecutor's office or the probation office in red. And there's also a secondary, second access to the police up on this upper floor, which will house detectives, the chief's administrative suite, and other evidence and other functions like that. Once, in order for public to get into any of the colored areas, both on the first and second floor, you'd have an escort of either the court or the police. So then this, I mentioned that we're reorienting the entry. This will be the new face of the Justice Center. You can see we've maintained what I would consider a very iconic part of this building, is that granite facade on the court areas. We'll be looking at adding a new curtain wall and a very open inviting walk up into the building. We are proposing, too, as we go around the building, that the existing brick, we will look at painting it. It's hard to tell in the renderings. It'll still have a texture of brick, but it will be a flat color to kind of give us an updated feel and a refresh on the building. So this view here is the view from the north parking lot, the public parking lot. You can see there is glass, there's windows, it's inviting, but not confusing. You don't see any doors. The public is going to be very clear when they come and park as to what door they're going to go into to enter. So we're moving, this is angled a little bit. You can see the courtroom in the granite box there in the corner of the new, of the north part. Where, if you're familiar with the building now, where there's that existing original curtain wall that I think is kind of pink paneled, a little blue where it's flicking off, we'll be pulling that off, and it'll be replaced with a combination of a metal panel window system and then this wood look composite panel. So it's not actually wood, but it gives you the warmth and the texture of wood. This is the view from the secure police parking lot. It is a bit less exciting. It's where we consider a back-and-house view. But we are going to work with the colors, again, painting the brick to kind of give it some life, give it some texture, but still maintain our budget. And then this is over on the side where the police drop off. This is what you would see from the Washington Street side of the building. Again, we're doing granite. We are doing some painting just to give it a refresh. As part of this, all the exterior doors, exterior windows, part of the roof are going to be projected to be replaced to bring them up to better working order. Most of the openings, the windows in this facility are original to the building, and they have, they have definitely given a good life, and they're ready, ready to change out. So next steps, we completed our schematic design, so as part of our schematic design package, in January of this year. We were working through some reconciliation with the budget, and I think we're ready to move forward now here in mid-February onto the next phase of design development, where we'll start to define more materials, specific products, and hone in, hone in the cost estimate. We are projected to get into bidding and construction after full detailed design in the last quarter of 2022. We're working, working through, not now, with Aaron. And one other thing to highlight, as we're working through this, each of our steps in the way, we do a cost estimate with it. This project was budgeted back in late 2020, last quarter of 2020, and the construction market has been a little crazy. It has continued to increase. We've seen, we saw about a 20% increase from when this project was budgeted. I know, I know, I hear the breaths. I wish you could, well, you're not the only municipality I've had to deliver this message to. And the material costs right now, they're continued to projected, project to escalate through the first half of this year. We're hoping they level off. There's no guarantee, but that's what we're looking at right now. That's what our sources are telling us, is we should kind of level off a little bit. The downside is that the market is still pretty saturated, especially in the public bid arena. You know, construction has been an essential function since the pandemic hit, and everyone's building, interest rates are great, so we're all moving forward. So we're still, we're still losing some of that competitiveness, at least right now. We will figure that goes.
Comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Waddington.
Who did you, who did they work with? Was it staff members, police departments? Did they, you know, come up with this change? I know it's not all, it looks like the template's pretty much in place, 75, 80% of it, just moving some stuff around. So for that 12 million number that we heard, that's another 2.4 million, correct, if it goes up 20%. So that puts it around 14, 14 and a half million. So I guess, who, who was involved in the details? Was our police chief that we have outside, have you done these before?
Yes, so.
So I have no background, just walked, I'd like to get a hard copy of that sometime, if we could.
Sure. So we'll start with the background. So this is, within the past three years, my fourth police station at Justice Center. This is what I do as an architect. I've spent 15 years doing public sector projects. Bowen, as a company, has spent over 60 years working on public sector projects. We do specialize in police court, what we call justice architecture. For this plan, we've been working with the police chief, with first chief, former Chief Orzek, and now Chief.
Oliver.
Oliver.
Thank you. Oliver, I wanted to say Brian, that's not right. Judge O'Brien. So Chief Oliver and Judge O'Brien now, and the clerk of courts, Cam Pietrowski, as well as their staff, to develop the plan and reorganize it. And part of the budget for this project is an entire refresh on the interior as well, to make it feel like a new building. So we, yeah, we've had, we've had bi-weekly meetings since we restarted this project with the team to make sure.
So it's going to be a common halls then for police and court, actually, to arrest these?
So if we, the.
I must admit.
No, that's okay. So kind of the color code in blue is police. So they do, they do kind of meet down there on the bottom where the orange and the blue meet. And they can, you know, we'll work out the details of who has access where, but they do have their own kind of suites.
Think we're all good with that, both sides, police and court?
Yes, yes. They've had, it's been a great team to work with. They've been really into, you know, working with us and having conversations and getting the details of this right, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I realize the fence, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for distributing the materials in advance. It was helpful to have that. The, maybe you don't know that we had that, but I think it was Mr. Klein forwarded them to us, so thank you for that. The question that I have is, I realize the fence is decorative, but given my druthers, I would prefer to have the fence held back from the very face of the building. It just seems to be a little too institutional. I realize we're talking about an institutional building, but I just think that's a concern. I'll toss that out there for whatever it's worth.
I guess, I'm starting to pull this side plan up. Are you, I guess I don't understand, you wanted to come back from the base of the building?
Yes.
The easternmost.
Right.
Easternmost portion on the.
Where we at?
That's right. This, this, oh, I don't have a pointer. The lower left-hand corner where the fence is, I just think it's.
Oh, okay, okay, I see how it's aligning with the face of the court there.
I would prefer to see it held back and have some landscaping that was sort of cover that.
Yeah, we can work with the, actually, this is a perfect time for the comment. The next phase is to get into details like that. So we'll work on that to pull it back and soften that, that face there.
Thank you.
Ms. Wolf, I, I only have retained one item as far as the construction of Justice Senator Giles Go, and that is the term Sallyport. And I notice we don't have one in this design. And the very, very limited knowledge I have of Sallyport is that it provides a safe, a very safe and secure area for the police to pull into and with the offender and drive inside of a building where they are completely secure and unload the offender. Very, very costly to add that, or that is missing in this design. Is this fence kind of a design to do the same thing, to act as somewhat of a Sallyport without having a real Sallyport?
So we are, let me go to the plan. We do have one of the garage bays. We'll be reactivating, and it's kind of hard to see. It's under the commission. I don't know if the pointer will work on the screen either. Oh, it does. Stuart, you're great. The pointer works, but my pointer doesn't work on the screen. So this is the existing garage space here, and this is a workout room they're using, but it used to be a garage bay. So we are, we're reactivating that fourth bay, and then the police are going to use, they're using this bay here. Yeah.
Right in there.
Yeah, they will pull into there, close the door. It'll be a secure space. Then they'll unload the prisoner to take them to the temporary holding.
So it is a miniature Sallyport.
It is a miniature. It's not a drive-through one, you know, that's what we prefer to do, but because we are working with the existing building for the police, for the Sandusky Police, and how they need to function with the prisoners, this works for them.
Now, you've heard my entire knowledge of Justice Centers and jails.
That's an, that's an important piece, very important piece. So, so the return to the fence, then, will act as a secondary. If something goes wrong and that door doesn't close, although the garage door doesn't close all the way for some reason, you'll still have a.
Second question, and it all, it really revolves around dollars and cents. We, we have moved from new construction, an entirely different site, to, back to this site and renovating. Is it your professional opinion that there is still a distinct cost savings to us in, in the renovation approach as compared to building new?
Yes, yes, because while, you know, the renovation dollars, the market has increased for those, new construction has been pacing it or outpacing it. We have a project, a city center project with police stations, small jail in process right now, and the portions of the project that were not the jail, but just police station, city hall, mayor's court, were for new construction, brand-new construction on a very clean site, were about 425 to 450, depending on the area. And in addition to that building new, there's a lot of major lead, long lead times on basic building elements like steel. So what it would, you know, a building of this size to build new, we'd do a steel frame. That would still be the most economical now, but it would continually push the schedule out because that's where the backups are, hot rolled steel and especially stone choice.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Paul.
Would you go back to the screen with the fence on it?
Yes.
Just back one. I also have had some thoughts about the, about the fence. Is there a reason that you can't move, okay, from there, where Mr. Murray said, move that back to where you can go to the next slide, to the police station? In other words, that staff area entry there for the court, what's the, the safety factor that requires that fence going all the way up to the front of the building?
Okay, so this.
Could it, could it not go back to the entry where the police department starts? I mean, I recognize the concept of fencing in an area that you have got your police cars and so forth, but simple staff parking there for eight hours a day during the day, that fence way up on, on, up at Mig Street, just, it's just not very nice-looking and open. Do somebody else's thoughts about it? You don't gain a whole lot, including that, those 16 parking spaces in there. We lose a lot in terms of the, the aesthetic effect, I think, of having that fence run all the way up to the street. It looks like a prison for no person that I can see.
We don't want it to look like a prison.
Of any purpose. I don't think it serves any purpose. Thoughts, Dennis?
Well, if I could respond, just real quick. The, so this, this staff entry down here, this is where the court clerks, the judge will all come in. And these 16 secure parking spaces were here for the court personnel. We do recommend you at least protect where your judge is parking, and this worked out.
What are we protecting them from?
Someone.
We're not in Cleveland.
Someone hanging about, about near their car afterwards and popping out because they're mad because they, you know, the judge made them pay a fine, and they had to, had to do that. So, I mean, we see it, but I do understand your concerns, too, about visually not wanting this to seem, not wanting this to seem unapproachable to the public.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I will say that, you know, the risks of judges and of police officers is quite real these days. And there was a judge, I believe he was murdered. I don't think it was just an attack down in a rural county in Ohio within the last 18 months, something like that. And we've seen officers ambushed. And I just, I take this, I take the security issue quite seriously, but I also take seriously the concern which you're raising, is that, you know, we need to have a, we need to have an appropriate public face. And if we brought back the fence to, say, somewhere where that staff entry is, we could still provide the necessary protection without having a fence right out there as part of our public face. That would be my preference.
Might I ask, what's the drive entrance to that parking inside that fence? Where's that, where, how do you get access to it with your car?
To, whoops, I apologize. Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to find the pointer. Okay, so down here, we'll start down here. There's.
I don't think.
The second entrance is kind of covered up by the, the little team.
Okay, okay.
There's an entrance here onto Washington, another entrance here. This is kind of one-way flow, so they can come in, the police can come in and back up.
Doesn't show on there.
Use the Sallyport, and then, yeah, I apologize, and then come back out onto Washington. And then the other entrance, thank you, Stu.
Yeah, okay, I see that. Is that a, that's an open entrance sliding?
Those are, they don't need vehicle gates there. So they'll, they'll be on a card reader.
So everyone in the building is going to, is going to slide a gate back and forth to get into work?
So it'll operate off of a.
A remote.
Oh, thank you. It will, I apologize. No, there's, everyone will have a card reader. So that'll be a SIM system you have here at city hall. There'll be, you'll have a card reader and a little stand with it on, so you have to swipe it. It'll be a motor-operated gate. It'll open, you'll drive in, and then it'll be time to close.
Guess what you decide to do, I guess that's what it'll be. I would suggest that, that security measures should meet the threat and the suggestion that I can't wait until the judge drives out of the parking lot. If I so desire to kill him, then I'm going to. So we're trading off a lot, given the impression that this is a dangerous place to live and do business. If we're conceding that on the front end, I think that's, that's just something to consider. And you're not building this for two years, so between now and then, you can figure it out. But the optics are not particularly good for what you actually get for this. You need, well, thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions?
I have one last question. This building, how long is this building going to live?
How long is this building going to live?
Yes, with what we're doing to it.
We design our new or renovated buildings to get, we design them to get about 30 years of life, minimum. I mean, that's, this is a public facility. You make this investment once in a lifetime. You know, I mean, you replaced this a couple of years ago, and it will, it'll last you for quite a while. We look to get the same longevity out of this. The bones, the structure of this building are good. We're going to update it with the technology infrastructure, any interior updates.
Okay, so the operational things that change over time is 30 years.
Oh, yes.
With just a window, but the building itself, with what we're doing, should last for much longer than that? Are you talking about the bones?
I hope so, yeah.
Okay, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Thank you for the presentation. I wondered, where is the greatest cost in retrofitting a building like this for a project such as this? Where's the greatest cost incurred?
The greatest cost for this building, based on the age, is really in the infrastructure, getting the HVAC systems, electrical systems, technology systems up to date, just because those are either typically untouched over the years or kind of piecemeal together as you need them. And then another large area of cost is, there's portions of the roof that we need to look at replacing. So that does, anything dealing with the exterior envelope does incur a decent amount of cost as well.
And if you paint the brick, it's been my experience that if you paint brick, eventually you have to maintain it. How often will that have to be maintained, do you think? How long will the paint stay on there since there's no longer any lead in paint, so it doesn't stay that long?
Yes, we have been talking about that. The products that we're looking at are made for commercial buildings. They're about a 10-year recoat window, so every 10 years. They are breathable, so they will not have an adverse effect on the wall itself and hold moisture in weird places. We want to definitely avoid that. And they also do have, they call it a self-cleaning property, but what it means is it, it's formulated so that dirt doesn't stick as easily to it. So every time it rains, it kind of gives it a bit of a rewash, helps it keep, keep it looking fresh, and the longevity of the paint to get you that 10-year recoat window.
Okay. And my last question, I don't know if it's to Mr. Klein, or Mr. Whoops, or what's the process from, from here on out? Do we, do we meet with staff along the way and, and take a deeper dive into this project, or what's the process? What do you anticipate?
Through the commission, President. When we started this, we were asked to make sure we came back and gave frequent updates or gave updates for the project. As we go through the design process, usually that's done at a staff level. We don't usually come back and ask for those questions and ask for design recommendations or alternatives. We are proceeding with the detailed design now, and that's where we're going forward. You know, the detailed design is going to be all those building systems that Robin mentioned. It's going to be the pavements, the fencing, picking out materials, electrical systems. We've been working with Stu to get the security. We've been working with Stu to get the security and those types of things. So we're just going to move forward with that process. At a staff level, we'll go through the building department for permitting and everything else. You know, go through all those requirements, those state requirements that we have to follow as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Mr. Wolf, thank you for the presentation, and we look forward to the next presentation, which I presume, as Mr. Klein indicated, will probably be a little deeper dive into where we are with cost, just prior, prior to bidding. And I'm sure we'll have some type of an architect's estimate as to where that's, where that's leading us. And hopefully, hopefully, I know you've been looking into your crystal ball as far as prices go, but I hope you're wrong.
I, I hope I am too. I wish I had a crystal ball. I wouldn't be doing what I'm doing if I had that. But thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks.
I'm very grateful.
Next presentation is, I see Mr. Snyder in the back, gonna give us a presentation on street resurfacing project. Very appropriate, Mr. Snyder, that you're providing us with this presentation as we're about to spend a million eight in street resurfacing tonight, so.
Yes.
Talk us into it or out of it, one or the other.
It's like comedy. It's all about timing, right?
That's right.
Thank you all for the opportunity. This is kind of a debrief of the 2021 local street resurfacing project and somewhat of a, kind of a state streets, not addressed, but kind of give you an update of where, where the roads and the road network in, in the city is, is headed and what it's looking like. First of all, there's the why, of course. And in 2020, you, most of you recall, we had already allocated for a project. We were at the point of almost awarding for bidding when COVID hit. 2020 got, got parlayed into 2021 where we were able to pair it with more money. And, and having the same goals, we were shift, at a point, street, roadwise of, of shifting our focus from total reconstruction to, to resurfacing and addressing the surfaces of streets. A lot of our worst-conditioned structural-issue streets had been addressed. Not all of them. We still have streets that have bad structure to them. But the objective of this project was to address the surfaces. And so trying to extend that money, get more miles done, was another goal. Realizing, if you go to the flow chart here, out of our 107 miles of roadway, 75 of them are residential, that, that the great need is, is on local roads. And so almost 15 miles was, was addressed in, in last year's project. You compare that out, fraction it, percentage it, it's, it's a good portion of what we have residentially. How did we pick the streets? Not in a vacuum, not throwing darts. We actually have, we have a spreadsheet that has the PCI, pavement condition index, and I won't get into that. We have historical data, of course. We have records from 50-plus years ago of when streets were paved. We have other projects, outside projects here. We have other projects planned, so obviously we don't want to overstep into those. We have private utilities with planned projects. And again, if we can know where they're at, we don't want to pave those roads and have them come dig them up the following year. Planning studies and then, of course, feedback. And feedback is, is broad-based, both from staff, street department, the guys who are out there every day. They know where the potholes are, they know where they fill them, but also where we, where we get calls from. You know, the, the input from the residents is important too. Hey, where, where are we getting the most complaints? But again, there's five points on this for, for how we make our selection. Here's a map of, of the streets that were resurfaced in 2021. There's dark blue and light blue, the difference being, dark blue were the planned streets and the light blue were the, the streets that were added toward the end of the project. There's a few on the east side underneath the box, further east, that are, that are actually also light blue that were added in. But this, this is a good graphic representation of what all, how widespread the program was. Taking another step back and a bigger, bigger look at what we've done the last three, the gray street, you'll see are, denote what we're done, what we have done in 2020. 2021 is the blue and what we're planning on doing, what legislation is in front of you in part, is the red. This also has in the large capital projects of Meg Street, Warren Street, and Perkins Ave, all slated for this year. And those are at various phases of, of design. Meg Street's out to bid right now. But this, again, this is a pretty impressive graphic to see what's, what's been done in a relatively short time, including what's to be done this year.
Can that graphic be moved? That MR that's blocking part of what we're trying to see?
I can move that.
Yeah, let me try that. Downsized it a little way.
There.
Perfect.
So, yeah, that was hiding, hiding C Street, C Street, 1213th.
14th.
And then a couple of concrete streets off of Remington Ave over there on the east end. Yep, now it's in the way. So our approach to the specification we used, there was, there was some feedback we had heard regarding inch and a half overlay. So we used a thin overlay, inch and a half, and, and people were like, where, where's that done? Who does this? And so in correspondence with the county, the county did Perkins Ave in 2019. As you all are aware, the south half was done. They did a three-inch overlay. Speaking with county engineers, I said, all right, Perkins Ave, the busiest road in the county, how far down did you guys see deterioration? How far did the cracks go? Did you guys need to go three inches? And I won't name, name the engineer. But he said two inches would have gotten, would have addressed what they saw defect-wise in the roadway of Perkins Ave. That's Perkins Avenue, 22,000 vehicles a day. We're doing residential streets. We don't need to go to, to the extent of a Perkins Avenue. 2020, ODOT came through Route 6. It was highlighted in gray. They did an inch and a half mill, an inch and a half pave on the entirety Route 6 from Tiffin Ave to the east city limits. Other cities, I know Norwalk does, Columbus, Cleveland, Toledo, also use inch and a half thin overlays annually. And, and some of them, some other suburbs of Columbus, the biggest portion of their street rehabilitation program is thin overlays. So we're not, we're not making this up. We're not the first, we're not pioneers in this. I snipped a little quotation from the National Asphalt Payment Association stating thin asphalt overlays for pavement preservation, that, that they are the most cost-effective surface treatment for asphalt roads. Not, not my quote, National Asphalt Pavements. Oh, we lost it again. So there's the typical section. Again, it shows that inch and a half that we took off and put back down. Again, really key are the edges of the pavement. We didn't want to, we didn't want to bury anybody's driveway. We didn't want to build up those edges. So a real key part of this is, is making sure those, those edges are milled down good so that we don't make a lip, a bump, place to trap water.
Question. Mr. Joe.
Mr. Whitehead. What about like crack sealing, like along the gutters and that? That was kind of like a small nightmare as far as, there was a lot lower cars going by hitting the holes along the gutters. Do we do any crack sealing there?
Yeah, that was included.
Because some of the, yeah, some of the ones I saw didn't.
They, they came back later and got all of them. So unlike, you, you would ideally want them to be right behind the paver and sealing the edges, they didn't. But they had a crew separately doing, doing edge sealing, and they did address all of the streets, so.
How many more tar and chip then? They did that one over by, right off Mylon Road, correct?
Yep.
It's nothing to do with.
No, no, it, it's part of the program. So the concrete streets, Mr. Whitehead brings up a good point. Concrete streets we addressed, not simply paving asphalt over, over the top of concrete. That's not best practice. But what we did was very similar to what ODOT does, and we did an interlayer, which looks like chip seal, effectively is chip seal, with small chip stone, and that gets into the joints and the cracks of, of the concrete underneath before laying the asphalt. So that interlayer is to take the cracks out of, and delay the cracks from coming to the surface.
Excuse me. Is that what you're doing to the concrete streets that are involved in this project?
Correct.
That's what's gonna be done from there?
Yeah, that was done, chalet lockwood. Yeah, yeah, last year.
What's going forward?
Yes. Technically speaking, I'm gonna not get too much into pavement design, but truck traffic volume is really a main consideration for, for pavement designs. The more trucks you have, the shorter life expectancy. It's really that simple. Few streets we selected in last year's program had heavy truck traffic. The ones that did, Mylon Avenue, received thicker asphalt, barge char. In fact, one loaded semi-truck is equal to 5,115 passenger cars. That's science. That's pavement design. So, and why, why is this relevant? Why is this important with what we're doing? We're doing local roads. We're not doing US routes. We're not doing state routes. Barge char, here's an example. You guys all remember this?
Yep.
This is near the winery. Uh-oh, this is gonna take off on me. No, it's not. All right. So what do we get out of this? What are the, what are the conclusions, benefits? And this is not, this is not Josh Snyder writing these as, as benefits. This is another slide ripped from the National Asphalt Payment Association. Thin overlays for pavement preservation, improve ride, reduce distress, maintain road geometrics, reduce noise, reduce lifecycle costs, and give long-lasting service. Them not be expected performance 10 years or more on top of asphalt, six to 10 years when placed on top of concrete. That's PCC, Portland Cement Concrete.
Josh, do you know how they came to those conclusions at all?
Obviously.
It's nice that they said it.
Yeah, I mean.
It's why it works. Why is it, why is there less distress? You just took their word for it. It's okay if that's, as long as I know.
My, my best guess, Mr. Paul, is that they have a lot of money and they do many, many studies. I mean, I can gather that data and harvest it for you if you want to.
Sometimes, yeah, don't put a lot of work in, that's okay. The 10 years more on asphalt, 10 years of it is something that we can actually measure.
Sure.
Because up to now, what you've talked about, three inches versus inch and a half, sounds like to the, to the uninformed, it's just how long, how, how much sooner we're gonna have to do it again. And so you've done an inch and a half in some places. Time will tell whether or not NAPA took, was telling the truth or if we were simply manufacturing justifications for spending less money because we had other things, because everything costs so much.
Sure.
So we'll go with the flow.
Well, and, and when you put a pavement down, it doesn't, it doesn't self-heal. Like, there is preventative maintenance you need to do, so on a regular basis. And I've been, I've been in discussions with the street department, and really for them, it's gonna be a shift of filling potholes after the damage is done to crack sealing. So they're gonna be spending probably in future years more time crack sealing, preventing roads from cracking and getting to potholes than there's a pothole, let's fill it.
Is that something we can expect you to track so we'll know whether or not we're doing well or not? Keeping up with the maintenance on the roads to prevent potholes?
I can, I can get that, yeah. Yeah, I can get that data from, from streets, certainly.
As you move.
They track, yes.
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'd request one piece of information from Mr. Snyder, and I think you've already anticipated it, and then two questions, which I will leave to be answered offline by the appropriate departments. But my, so I'm gonna put those two questions first. We have had in the past some challenges with drivers from, truck drivers from other communities who are, are going down to Gradle to pick up salt and stone from time to time, driving through, driving on streets that are not appropriate for that. I know that the police department made a concerted effort a while back to enforce the truck routes. I'm just looking for a little bit of an update in terms of where we are with that and whether we've got good, good compliance or is it sense that those 5,000 equivalent cars are traveling on the wrong streets. The second question, which I would ask perhaps of the law department, perhaps to Mr. Klein question, I, I wish there were a way that we could, I wish there were an ordinance that we could adopt to prevent the practice of, I don't know, if it's gas companies or the private contractors for gas companies or who it is, that no matter, no matter when we put a road down, they seem to come along and carve up the road afterward. And I, I wish that we could have an ordinance that says, look, we're gonna repave this road next year. You get whatever you deem need done now, or you're prohibited from doing it for the next five years, or you're gonna have to pay a significant fine. And, and go back and make sure it's right, because, I mean, these, these cuts they do, they just aren't right. So I just appreciate a little feedback in terms of whether there was something we can do. But my question to you, Mr. Snyder, which I think you had anticipated already, is, are we getting to the point, if we continue this program for another four or five years, where we essentially get out over a hump and we, we see that we're in more of a maintenance phase, less expensive, maintaining better streets? So just a little feedback on that, please.
Yeah, no, that, so to address the private utilities, they're, they're tough. Obviously, we don't control them, we don't dictate where they go. Where they have need is where they plan projects. What we struggle with, and, and we're working, we have a relationship with them, obviously, is they don't let us know where projects are until even within the calendar year. But I think our relationship's getting better. We have good correspondence, and I think they've added and beefed up, Columbia Gas specifically, they've beefed up on staff to make connects with the local governments and find out what we're doing project-wise so that they can plan as, as good as they do, as far out as they do around or in conjunction with our projects. So much like the resurfacing we have coming up before you tonight, we have two segments of Jackson Street that are in conflict with where they want to do line replacement. And so we're working through timing of how that, how that will mesh. So obviously, the last thing we want to do is put a road in, or put a new surface down and have them come cutting back into it in the same summer, in the subsequent summer. Yeah, that, obviously, that looks bad on everybody.
Mr. Chairman. I appreciate they have easement rights, but in many instances, it's my observation, they're not acting within their easement rights. I think they just go carve up the road because they feel like carving it up, but it's the cheapest way to do it. And what I'm looking for is legal feedback from Mr. Hile, in all probability, in terms of what a charter city has in terms of ability to say, no, you get five, you get five years' notice and you can't come in unless you give us five years' notice. And I just, I don't, I kind of doubt we can do that, but I'd like to know the answer.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pagella.
I, my only reluctance on something like, if you put more restrictions in against the utility companies, sometimes it takes an act of Congress to get them to come out and, and take care of those utilities when you want to do a project. And you wait, and you wait, and you wait, and you're at the mercy of, of those companies sometimes. If you put more restrictions in, it might be even more difficult to get them to come out. So that, that's just a comment.
Commissioner Paul.
Just, just a thought, if, in your interaction with them, if, if they know what your five-year plan is for roads, at least you've made the effort to say, this is where we're going. How's this match up with your law? How's this match up with your long, your short-term goals? And perhaps through that process still, you know, just get closer together and be able to do, to do this. I do have a, a thought about getting over the hump, as Mr. Murray talked about. How long is it gonna take us to get, at the pace we're going now, to get to 107 miles up to date? And after you tell that, how much money more is it gonna cost to speed that process up?
I, I have a slide that addresses that. I think it's coming up here. It may be the next one. So, good question. You guys step me into the next, into the next slide. But I, I just wanted to make a statement about the overall general condition, selected streets that we had in, in 21's program. We're, we're actually in better structural condition than, than we first anticipated. Now, people see a surface, a road surface all cracked up and may even see some shallow potholes and think the road is horrible. But once that's milled away, broomed away, and there's not rutting, shoving, washboarding, those are the structural, real keys to noting that something's wrong underneath. That means digging. That means more expensive repairs. And, and a couple of things that Sandusky has going for it in general are, are roads originally mostly macadam-based, which whatever they used in that tar mix with the stones was really good, really good stuff. I, I don't know environmentally how it is, but roadway-wise, it built some nice roads. We have shallow bedrock. So that when, when you're thinking of a sandwich of roadway pavement, stone base, and your subgrade, and then you've got limestone underneath that, and shallow in many areas, that's, that's a good thing for us. Other cities, other towns aren't as fortunate there. And, and pairing with that, we have few instances of unstable soil conditions. We don't have a lot of sands. And, and the streets we picked have, have little truck traffic. So all those things really help, help make these roads that we just addressed. Yeah, they were in poor condition, but they weren't structurally poor. We didn't have to go to that extent. So in the end, it, it minimized what we spent on partial and full-depth repairs. And that was how we were able to do those extra 21 sections in light blue, baby blue, that you saw earlier. So here, here's what, as a conclusion, our overall condition of the streets improved 27% in, in, in the one year. With, like I say, with the savings, 173 street segments were actually surfaced. So block lengths is a segment, a certain street from street to street, which equates to about 15 miles. So almost 14% of all streets were surfaced this year. Project funding allowed us to be able to address items that wouldn't have been otherwise. We addressed some sinkholes on Central Ave. There was some utility work, drainage, we were able to, to address and improve. And then there was a section of roadway that was undermining out on Barge Char that we were able to shore up and, and enclose a ditch. So here's that curve Commissioner Murray referred to. And so I don't know if you'll be able to read all, everything that's on there, but at the top is the least invasive pavement maintenance. Down at the bottom is like reconstruction. And so as you get near, near the top, as your, as your roadway gets, roadway conditions get near the top, there's less extensive, less expensive pavement maintenance. And so going off of where, where I said we were, we're in the low 60s now. We're in about the middle of that yellow range for surface treatments. That's, again, that's really broad description of, of the overall condition of our pavements. But there's probably a few towns that are in the blue, to be really honest. Green are probably some of the more affluent suburb subdivisions. I, I can only imagine, probably not many small, mid-sized towns like ours that would be in that range. So looking forward, just like Transmit Map, you'll recall, they were a consultant that did pavement condition for all of our streets. They drove all the roads using GIS. They predicted in 2015, the city's average PCI will plateau in the upper 60s. We're in lower 60s now. Will be in the mid, mid to upper 60s after this year's 78 segments that's planned, that's in the legislation tonight. With, will plateau in the upper 60s with $1 million per year commitment in simple resurfacing. So what, what that's saying is basically $1 million is the cost to keep our roadway network in stasis, for it to stay even keel across the board. Because as you all know, roadways degrade, summer after summer, traffic, sun, it, they all degrade. So if we're to stay at a 61 where we're at right now, that means spending $1 million on the surface of the pavement. So reconstruction, not count, not counted. This is surface treatments. So, but of course, in general, the more money we spend, the greater PCI, the less money, the less. And I believe that is the conclusion.
Questions, comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pajali.
My only comment is I applaud the efforts of Mr. Snyder and the engineering department to move forward on this paving projects. I think that, I don't, I don't have a problem with the inch and a half. I mean, it's pretty, they, they do it out in the townships and, and that all the time. And OPWC does fund a certain category for inch and a half. So you can get money to do projects with only an inch and a half. So to me, that says it, it's probably a fairly good practice if they're willing to fund it, so.
Mr. Snyder, the, the bottom line appears to be we need to spend a million bucks a year just to stay where we're at. So if we're gonna gain on this, the dollars, over a million dollars, improve our position. $2 million dramatically improve our position a year.
Sure, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's just in resurfacing. That's not.
A million dollars is surface, surface only, so.
Surface, surface only. What are we doing now, roughly?
Hmm, I don't, I don't have that number with me.
No ballpark.
I can do some digging. Obviously, we, you know, we claw and scratch for the grant dollars, the OPWC, CDBG to try to leverage what we have, but.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I also wanna echo that you guys have done a great job with the roads, with the resources that we provided you. In fact, you've stretched our money significantly with all the light blue. It's pretty obvious you work pretty hard. I do think, just for commission, we need to get out of the yellow and in the green. Whatever it takes to get in the green. If you're going to, as he said, the affluent suburbs, that's where they are. If we wanna become that, where people, if you only get affluent from people moving here and living here that are, that have, have money, we, we need to start bringing in the amenities that those places have. And that's a, that's a standard that I think we should be looking forward to in terms of this budget. And if the money's not there now, let us know. If we haven't got enough money budgeted to start us in that direction.
Other than public safety, I don't know that there's anything that resonates with our, with our constituents, our residents more than, than having good streets to travel on. And that's not just the street in front of their house, but it's the street that they use to get to the grocery store, get to school, get to church. Those are things that, that are very important. Mr. Snyder, I wanna thank you for such a thorough presentation. We are fortunate to have you. You obviously know surfacing above and beyond all the other qualities you have as, as an engineer. But I would ask my fellow commissioners to remind me to not bring him back for this kind of a presentation when we have 15 items on the agenda.
Thanks, and I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the communications from staff.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. But a motion and a second, without, without hesitation, motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have five items on the consent agenda. Do any of you wish to move those to the regular agenda and slow this meeting down even further?
Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I'm gonna abstain on resolution, on item B, Resolution 1. Or I can abstain on all of them if you're gonna pass them anyway.
You're gonna abstain?
So whatever you wanna do, yeah, it's, I don't know how to do it if you're gonna do it on a consent agenda. I'll just abstain from the whole thing.
Yeah, I think it's in the record that you're abstaining from that, and Ms. Myers will note that.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent. Ms. Myers, you present the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, Lexipol annual dues. Item B, 2022 Erie County MPO applications. Item C, Economic Development Administration Grant for the Landing Project. Item D, CDBG Street Rehabilitation Project Change Order 1 and Final. And item E, Big Island Water Works Emergency Purchase and Installation of VFD for Pump Number 5.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, what is your pledge?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A through E and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions is drafted and presented to the city commissioner, or to the city commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with sections reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. Now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes, with the exception of abstaining on item B, Resolution 1.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions are passed. Turn now to regular agenda. Ms. Myers, you present item number one on the regular agenda.
It's requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into agreement for professional design services with Osborn Engineering of Cleveland, Ohio for the Columbus Avenue Streetscape Design and Reconstruction Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'd like to ask Mrs. Blair, the plan, chief planner, when I read through this, it runs from Adams to Water Street, correct? So I guess my second, or B to my question would be the Shade Mylander. Is that gonna be something that's followed up at a later date, looking at doing the freshening up or soldering that? If I could get a clear.
Ms. Blair.
Thank you so much, Commission President Brady and both commissioners. I'm here to answer your questions. Also, we have Steve Cook, the project manager for the process at Osborn Engineering, and Colin Mavis is here with MKSK as well. To your question, we had received some feedback during the downtown planning process that Shade Mylander Plaza should be a different project than Columbus Avenue. So this scope is just for Columbus Avenue from Adams to Water Street and does not include Shade Mylander Plaza. At the same time, we're also thinking of that extension all the way to the water, to the Shoreline Drive project, and thinking about all as one place. So it's important to consider Shade Mylander Plaza as a future project. It's not specifically in the scope, if that makes sense. This is a design and reconstruction process for just Adams to Water Street and Columbus Avenue.
Correct, correct. I'm just worried about, once we go to the Shade Mylander area, something that's gonna be raised, improve sightlines, because I think we'd get a lot of bad publicity on that. In my opinion, Mr. Mylander is a superstar in this community, and he's left behind a legacy of money for, you know, years and years and years. And I, I just don't feel comfortable. That's not that old of a area, that plaza area down there. That's just my opinion. And if I have to swallow that sword on my own up here, then I'll do it.
That reflects what we heard in the downtown planning process, was that Shade Mylander Plaza is just not quite ready for, it's, it's in good, it's in pretty good shape. And it sounded like the consensus was that's kind of a later project. It's not included in this.
That was my question.
Thank you. Additional commerce or questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Mrs. Blair, I'm really not on board. This project essentially is what you're doing is you move, since you don't have any drawings up here or anything. The trees on the, on the street, on sidewalk now are gonna move to the middle. Is that essentially it, what you're doing? And we're gonna have parallel parking instead of angle parking? Is that the single biggest visionary thing we're gonna see here or not?
What we heard in the downtown plan process over and over was the, the desire for larger sidewalks and larger spaces for outdoor dining. So the concept really maximizes that pedestrian experience and the feel of that, you know, when you're, when you're walking up and down the street, as, that Columbus Avenue is a public space. It's our main street. It has to serve our business efforts. It has to serve the people that are walking here. So the trees now, yes, they will be replaced with new trees. There's a larger green space for trees, larger sidewalk and outdoor dining space. And also, I, I should say this, that's a vision that's established in the plan with the amount of engagement we have in the plan. This design process has a community engagement component at the beginning. So nothing is set in stone about that concept. That's our vision from the downtown plan that we will take and into the community engagement process as part of this design process.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
I guess if I could just add a comment to, to, I guess, the question that Mr. Poole had. And correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, but I think also with the, with the widening of the sidewalks and things like that, if I remember correctly, the goal was time, kinda to create some versatility within that area as far as event planning and things like that are concerned, right? Just to kinda designate it for that area?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I recall a statement made in the, in the plan that I looked at, talking about a curbless area that is both pleasing and functional to people that are being mobile in that area, be able to go from one side to the other, encourages outside dining. The trees being much larger moved in gives you a canopy for people to travel under. More of a festive look than, than certainly than what we have now.
Absolutely. So included in the concept, it's in the master plan, there would be the ability to close off the street to create a festival if, for, you know, a temporary time when there's no vehicles on, allowed on Columbus Ave. So it can function every day for what it needs to, to serve City Hall, to serve our businesses. And then it can be also kind of that festival experience. So that really is playing a lot of different, different places at the same time and, and serving all of those needs.
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I just wanna echo or, I guess, express my appreciation for the fact that we have left Shade Mylander out for the time being. I think that just weighs down this project potentially with one thing that becomes a unnecessary focal point, flashpoint perhaps, and allows us to focus on the balance of the project. No question, at some point in time, we should consider a refresh of Shade Mylander Plaza. But I largely share Mr. Waddington's sentiments that, you know, we just don't need to get into that right now. And maybe later on down the road, we'll look at freshening it up.
Additional commerce or questions for Ms. Blair?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
What are you, this runs for about 12 million, 12, 14 million dollars by time or done. What are you projecting is gonna be the outcome in terms of increased business downtown? And where is that coming from? Who are these people in, that another 12 million dollars is going to fill restaurants and so forth?
Through the Commission President, to Commissioner Poole, I'm not sure where you're getting that 12 million dollar number. But I think our estimate for construction is somewhere in the $3 to $5 million range for this project. That would be backed by TIF dollars on downtown buildings, including this project, a portion of the Hogriffy Building, the Fike Building, the Marketplace at the Cook, the Schattenstein Building that was redone as to the Schmidt Building, I should say, the BGSU Building. And I think I'm missing one more. I think there were seven. But those projects were done, at least in part, and that's representative of about $70 million investment right there. And those TIFs were passed with the idea that that 70 million of investment would be supported by this type of infrastructure investment that would be made by the TIF. So I think that the 100 to 150 million that's already been invested downtown, plus the funds, Small City going forward this year, the $30 million planned improvement to the State Theater project, the hotel project planned for the Jackson Street parking lot and others, is that this is part of, in its totality, what is becoming a destination downtown. Historically, Sandusky is known as a destination, mostly for done-in today trips, for places where you pay for a ticket. Downtown has the ability to make Sandusky a significant. Downtown has the ability to make Sandusky a significant destination for tourists, but in the heart of our city. That also stabilizes our neighborhoods. And if you look at property values, for example, the intersection of the BGSU project, where the distillery, about another 2 million dollar investment that's being made there, and where Tim Dorsey Fitness opened, within one block of there, you can count about 10 houses that have been rehabbed on East Washington Street and Market Street, or new housing under construction. That's the type of ripple effect investment that these infrastructural investments that we're making in the downtown can have, not only in downtown or on Columbus Avenue, but in the blocks. They're part of a larger vision for bringing value, not to the edge of our city, but to the heart of our city.
Okay, essentially, you told us how we're going to pay for it, and those things I understand. The issue is not whether or not X number of dollars translate into more dollars being invested, I understand that. Talking about whether or not what we actually spend the money on, is it going to actually have a return on investment and do what we want? Now, Adams Street, from Adams Street to Market Street, those are probably energizing the courthouse and Adams Junior High School, that area. Investing a significant amount of money in that is what I'm questioning whether or not this is worthwhile. Likewise, when you get to Washington Row, the next block, it's a parking lot and a government building and a parking, and our government building on the other side. Vita, yes, it is there. And it's really, I'm talking about the design of what you have. What I saw from the picture was what appeared to be a boulevard of trees of something going down the center of the street. Parking changed on, and it's just a narrowing of the street. And I'm suggesting, I'm asking, is that going to make more people come downtown after we spent all that money? Or are there possibly other configuration of things that we could do? Extend the sidewalk out a little bit, perhaps? You could do that. And increase the dining? We've done some good, very good things here. I'm more concerned about the money that's spent that doesn't really improve necessarily bring us more business. And then there is the question of what business are we talking about? The community is not growing in terms of population. We haven't brought any new jobs here, and we are spending things. It sounds good when you talk about it, but I am concerned that nobody said that this is going to bring this many more people here. We did the Jackson Street Pier that needed to be done. I would point out very carefully that Lang Trust always, already did movies. They just did them inside. We had music from the symphony. It was done inside the State Theater. So when we moved them to the pier, it was very nice. It's a good experience. You didn't add any business. Now, the business we did add was the business that we added when we paid to have bands go down there. And I'll point out that we had more people before we changed Jackson Street Pier and put a reggae band out there on that blacktop and packed it. So I'm not opposed to these things, but this concept of just keep spending money without having a conversation of whether, does this particular thing we're doing actually improve us to justify the money that we're spending on it? Or is it just another change? And I'm not necessarily right. I mean, I heard what you said, and as long as it turns out that we, people go, oh, wow, I want to go down here and sit under these trees on, I think, I'm questioning, how are you going to remove the snow with a narrow street? Where are people going to, when we take half the parking away? Because you go from 21 spaces per block to 11, and the biggest concern people that I've heard from property, from business owners, is, in fact, I had one ask me, Wes, could you come up with a parking plan for us down here? We're having trouble with parking. And it may have never come to you. But those are the things I'm concerned about. I'm not opposed to this. I am not sure this is going to work. It's going to be worth the investment that we're doing, and we should look at other options.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Ms. Murray.
I will say only this in response to the important question that Mr. Poole raises, and that is that, you know, we're making, we are making calculated decisions for our community's future. We don't know with any certainty how it's going to turn out, but I think if we travel to other communities, we see, I was in Cleveland last weekend, and I always like to see what they're doing there. They're doing a lot of interesting things. I was in Columbus not too long ago before that, and, you know, I see what different communities try. And I don't think we can expect to have a perfect return on investment on every project. But I do know that the Jackson Street Pier, as an example, has brought a lot of additional people to our community. I can't count them. I don't have any way to count them. It's too amorphous, but it's drawn a lot of attention to the community. And I think when we make these kinds of improvements, we do draw a spotlight to us, and I think that that is part of the long-term play here, if you will, that we do these things to attract other people to invest and live in our community. So understanding that we could make mistakes from time to time, I'm comfortable with this as a calculated investment.
There certainly are no guarantees, and we can sit here for a long time and debate the return on your investment, the return on 3 million dollars, and I think it's unfair oftentimes to do that when you're trying to redefine a downtown. What this does do is it is the wow factor. It is the same factor that you now have with the Jackson Street Pier and with Shoreline Drive. And I think the concept of moving that south to Adams Street is a brilliant one, and I think it's an absolutely necessary one. And again, I echo Mr. Murray's thoughts and to a degree, Mr. Poole's thoughts. We don't know that for sure, but I think it's worth trying. I think it's worth taking a chance on, and I think it's worth extending exactly what we've been doing. Additional comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Pajali.
My only comment would be, that's why I was glad to see they had public outreach in this. And if you incorporate that in there, hopefully, we'll maybe navigate our way through some of those pitfalls and some of the things that people don't want upfront instead of later on. So I appreciate that that's in there.
Exactly.
If I could, just one more time. Through the Commission President of the Commission, I think the pier and Shoreline Drive, which have been mentioned a few times, are a really good example of a process that had a lot of public opposition, but there was also demonstrated on behalf of the city staff and the consultants that were partners to that project, a lot of compromise, that tried to find the balance between the sort of progressive or ambitious changes that they wanted to make to the pier and to Shoreline Drive, and the project that ended up getting built. And my guess is if you took a poll of the public before those projects went forward, they weren't nearly as popular as they are two years after their completion. And I genuinely believe that the same people and the same passion that were involved in that are what will help us navigate that public process on Columbus Avenue and end up with a project at the end led by Aaron and the rest of the folks with the input of the Commission and the community that will find the right balance between pushing the envelope forward and hearing that feedback. You know, I think we've demonstrated time and again that we can do that and do that well and move the community forward at the same time.
Mr. Chairman. Ms. Poole.
I didn't say anything about the Shoreline Drive, just for clarity. And with regard to Jackson Street Pier, it wasn't opposition to doing Jackson Street Pier, it was the fact that we eliminated so much parking down there without a plan for how we were going to replace it when it was needed later. That was really the underlying concern that I had with this. We just simply didn't plan fully. And granted, there were many people that argued over the nitpicks, whether or not they wanted a Ferris wheel out there or something like that. Those are things that come in the discussion in a community of 25,000 people, and so that's just healthy conversation. But my concerns are about short-term planning with a whole lot of money that have long-term holes in it. And in the case of Jackson Street Pier, it was all the parking we're taking out, and this entire thing, all the parking we took out of downtown, that we have not come up with a way that we're going to replace it. And if we are successful and fill all these businesses with customers, that will hit us. So just to be clear, you didn't have a lot of opposition to improving the city.
Ms. Myers, we call the roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two, please.
Item number two. It's requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with Smith Group Architects and Landscape Architects PLLC of Ann Arbor, Michigan, for the South Side Sandusky Neighborhood Plan and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wantington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Murray.
I think of all the things that we've done, this may be one of the most important things we do, dollar for dollar. This, the South Side and the need for a plan for the South Side neighborhood was put on the table at the beginning of the bicentennial planning process. That's, in fact, I think we had more resident output input than we did anyplace else. We've been in the process of acquiring properties over time to make this possible, and I'm really pleased that we're at this threshold where we can move forward with additional public input and developing a more specific plan. So glad this is here.
Mr. John.
Ms. Wantington.
I was glad to see that they at least mentioned the Mills School on the South Side and hopefully that, I know we've had discussions about the Rec Center possibly being there until we get something built, if it's even temporary, two or three years. I think that location could work. So I was happy to read when I, I'm one of the dummies that reads a packet at four in the morning.
Additional comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
I guess if we're not able to identify for ourselves what all needs to be done there, that $149,000 is probably within reason if they're going to give us a comprehensive plan that we're going to work off of and just fix the area up. There are many things, water, sewer, that I would have thought that we knew needed to be done, but this will wrap it all up. When is this meant to be, when is this going to be complete?
Ms. Blair?
Yeah.
Timeline.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Poole. I also mentioned that Michael Johnson, the principal of the consulting team, is on team if you have any technical questions on the scope. We expect this process to be, I think it's a 10-month process, and that includes three big public outreach events and 16 stakeholder meetings, steering committee. It's going to be a ton of community engagement. I'm really excited.
So perhaps before next Christmas?
Yeah, we should be able to complete it by the end of the year with your approval this evening.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It's requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Re &amp; Associates of New Philadelphia, Ohio, for the preparation of the December 31, 2021, December 31, 2022, and December 31, 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Murray.
I move for the immediate adoption of this ordinance consistent with article 14 of our charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Advanced Excavating and Demolition LLC of Macomb, Ohio, for the CDBG Fiscal Year 21 Demolition Project Number Two and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Murray.
I move for the immediate adoption of this ordinance pursuant to section 14 of our city's charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed CDBG Fiscal Year 21 Demolition Project Number Three and directing the city manager to advertise and receive bids in relation thereto and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole?
I move for the adoption of this.
Ms. Wantington. I think that was a tie. Ms. Wantington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second. You did sound like Commissioner Poole. Discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six, please.
It's requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed 2022 sewer lining project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of the cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. We all were the benefit of a explanation of the sewer lining project. So I'm presuming that's why there are no questions on this.
Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris. Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington. Mr. Harris. Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number seven, please.
It's requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated of Columbus, Ohio, to provide a water distribution system model and report.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Murray.
I move for adoption of this ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a little bit of a narrative on this? I mean, I understand the basic idea is that every so often we need to do an update. We put in different lines and they all impact, the water lines, and they all impact each other. And we've got some idea of how they interplay. But there was a good explanation in terms of what it was this does in the packet. I think the public would benefit from that.
It appears that Mr. Snyder is on vacation, but he's there to answer a question.
He's quick.
That's cute.
Now he needs to unmute his mic.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so the water distribution model is a model that consultants typically do for cities, giving us a roadmap of deficiencies in our system. So instead of looking at a particular area, neighborhood of the city, it looks at the city holistically in areas where we can use more pressure, more flow, where there may be a pattern of breaks and things for us as engineers to plan projects where we need to size lines up, where we need better flows, fire purposes, for all of those reasons.
And Mr. Snyder might understand that you don't do this every year. Every other year, you do it after accumulation of years, after your system has grown. You've made a bunch of changes, collectively pulls all those changes together, and you kind of remodel your entire system to see where your weak spots are, where your strong spots are, and kind of gives you a heads up as to where the next break's going to be or where the next infrastructure breakdown is going to happen.
Yeah, that's fair assessment. And as we do projects and as we upgrade lines, the model changes. And so, you know, just like the West End project, we did almost two miles of water main. And so that's going to affect flows on the West End, obviously for the good. But what does that mean in other areas? How far reaching does that go? So, yes.
Great. Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
Question, when will this be done?
There's a lot of data collection that goes with this, Mr. Poole, like use. And so, you know, the high users, we're going to track those, where those locations are. It's a 10-month process.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That passes on first reading and will come back to us one more time. Ms. Myers, you present item number eight, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional design services with Mott McDonald, LLC of Cleveland, Ohio, for the West Monroe Street resurfacing project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Watt.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number nine, please.
It's requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed 2022 local street resurfacing project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Murray.
We should be tripping over the desire to move this one. I move for the adoption of resolution, this resolution, consistent with Section 14 of our city's charter.
Second.
Yeah, I mangled that one, didn't I?
I think we get the gist of it anyway. Can I have a second to whatever that was?
Second.
I got it, yes.
Mr. Poole seconded that. Discussion. The good news is it is $1,008,000. And that tells me that we're $800,000 ahead of the curve. That presentation we all sat through. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 10, please.
It's requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first and final change order for work performed by Gurkin Paving of Napoleon, Ohio, for the 2021 local street resurfacing project in the amount of $69,210.31, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 11, please.
It's requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed 2022 Big Island Waterworks Plant Variable Frequency Drives Replacement Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watt.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 12, please.
It's requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $60,000 through the Economic Development Fund Program to Tambo Entertainment, LLC, in relation to the property located at 220 East Water Street, Sandusky, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. I believe we had a resident question regarding that piece of legislation. I wonder if Mr. Holliday, if you're with us, if you can answer that question, if you're aware of those questions?
Yes, you are.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I believe the question related to what portion of the project our grant was going to support. And the answer to that is our grant is going to support the capital improvements at the project, which total over $600,000. Those capital improvements are quite extensive. They range from full bathroom renovations, renovations to the entranceways, major renovation of the entire first floor of the building. So our funds are going to support the overall projects, specifically the capital investment and capital improvements at that location.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday. I will be abstaining from voting on this issue as this is a potential customer of a company that I have ownership in. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Watt.
I drove by there and looked at the progress. And I had a little flashback to 1975 when I could still break dance and it was called the cellar. I think it was fast, wasn't it, Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
We used to cut a rug. And now I'm lucky if I can get out to my truck.
Any pictures of that? Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, first I would like to request that Commissioner Watt can give us a reenactment right here, front and center of that breakdancing, some of those moves. But no, in addition to that, I just want to say, it was about a couple of weeks ago. I was walking by there at night and I happened to look up. And I instantly thought, I was like, man, that place like gives off like city vibes, like it looks awesome in there. And then so I followed up on Facebook and took a look at some of the sneak peek pictures that they've provided. And I think it's just going to be an awesome space, something to just kind of like, you know, diversify what this area has to offer. So I'm really excited about the opening, you know, of this venue. And, you know, just appreciate, you know, the individuals involved in this project, you know, for their commitment and such, you know, a great deal of investment in this area. So thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And Mr. Brady.
Abstain. Now on the ordinance, please.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
And Mr. Brady.
Abstain. That ordinance is passed. Concludes our regular general turn over to City Manager for his report. Mr. Webster.
Thank you, Commissioner President Brady. Before I start, I just wanted to say that we did have some members. I don't know if you guys wanted to say anything about the project before I get started.
It's wonderful, thank you. I mean, we are just trying to continue helping downtown and again, diversify what's going on downtown. Trying to keep people downtown longer. That's our goal, so.
Thank you for your investment.
Awesome.
So, starting with donations, first just to thank you to the Commons of Providence Care Center for their donation of two dozen jars of chili to the public work staff, to thank them for their snow plowing efforts during this last winter storm. I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the donation of the chili.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Objection, the motion be approved. No objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Moving on to finance, due to Emancipation Day, the municipal income tax filing deadline for 2021 income tax returns is April 18th. All individuals and businesses can utilize their regional income tax agencies website or Rita at www.ritaohio.com to file their taxes. In order to coordinate furniture and fixtures with the Justice Center, detailed design staff plan to release a request for qualifications for furniture within the next few weeks will bring back an agreement once a vendor is selected. Also, the spring cleanup citywide has been set for Saturday, April 23rd. Further details will be shared as that date approaches. And questions can be directed to 419-627-5829. And finally, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval for the Planning Division to apply for a certified local government grant in the amount of $19,800 in order to update the city's preservation design guidelines. No matching funds are required. And if the application is successful, come back for the necessary legislation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? No objection, motion is approved. No objection, the motion is approved.[1349.28]